Yeah. Good afternoon, everybody.
Dr. Rice, we don't have a picture of you.
Do you need a picture of me to go on the thing instead of a name?
We are already live, so your video is now on and so is your mic.
Oh, I know that. All right. Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon. Muy buenas tardes a todos. We are just taking a moment to make sure that we have our American Sign Language interpreters ready for those in the audience who need this important service. So if you are an interpreter in the attendees list, please change your Zoom name to interpreter so we can easily locate you and elevate you to a panelist position so that you can have the screen pinned for everybody. Again, if you are an interpreter on the call, please change your attendee name to interpreter so that we can easily locate you to make sure that we elevate your status to panelist, giving all the participants access to this important service. Thank you. We'll get started in just a moment.
Thank you to everyone who is now joining us. We are waiting for our interpreters and we'll start shortly.
Mosquitos, if you would like to just kind of keep bumping in the ways that we are doing Q and A today while we continue to look for the interpreter and Director Conans or Assistant Director Neely, if you have the name of the interpreters, since they haven't changed to interpreter yet and you want to email that directly to Mosquitos, she can also find them by their first and last name in their attendees.
Thank you, Dr. Cortez. So if anyone would like to answer or ask questions during our town hall today, you may do so either through the Q and A section or through Ventura's email address at greatideas@venturausd.org. We will be taking as many of those questions that we can as we can, but we'll be doing them at the end of the presentation.
Ms. Keros?
Yes.
Interpreter Karen Sandler is online. She just cannot find the area to change her name.
Okay.
She just called me on the phone.
Ms. Sandler, I believe you now have access. And for those that need American Sign Language, Ms. Sandler will be your interpreter.
Yes, I do. Let me change my name to interpreter now.
Thank you. Again, we will be starting momentarily, but if you do have any questions throughout the presentation, we're hoping we answer most of them for you today. But if you do, please feel free to put them in the Q and A section as well as I will be taking them from greatideas@venturausd.org and we'll answer as many of those as we can at the very end of the presentation. Just sit tight, we'll be starting momentarily.
Okay. So I changed my name to ASL interpreter and Nadia and I are teaming and will be using the same machine.
Thank you very much. We do have a good question. We are not able to see or hear our attendees today, just those panelists that will be speaking. So no worries about muting or video. We can't see or hear you, so we're good. So again, please use the Q and A function if you'd like to ask a question or email us at greatideas@venturausd.org. Thank you.
All right. Mosquitos, I think with the ASL interpreter ready to go and properly named so that anyone with interpreter needs can find her, I think that we are just about ready to begin. If you wanted us one more time, share how the public can engage with us this afternoon.
Absolutely. So we will be answering any questions folks have at the end or as many as we possibly can get to. If you'd like to put those in the Q and A section here or you can email them at greatideas@venturausd.org and we will answer those at the end of the presentation. Dr. Cortez, it's all yours.
Thank you to our panelists and special guests. Please feel free to turn on your video. Now we're going to get started with recording. And I'll begin by making sure I can share my screen. Mosquitos, if you can make sure you're looking for Assistant Superintendent Rose and the attendees to make sure she becomes a participant.
Will do.
Okay, so with all of our housekeeping ready to go, my name is Dr. Danielle Cortez and I'm the Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services for the Ventura Unified School District. I'd like to turn it over to our superintendent, Dr. Rice, who will take care of some important introductions. Dr. Rice?
Thank you, Dr. Cortez. First of all, I'd just like to begin this afternoon's event by thanking everyone for being here. A special thank you to our teachers and support staff and presenters. We also have several board members on the call with us today. I know for sure our Board President Sabrina Rodriguez is here. She'll be addressing you momentarily. And a special thank you to our parents. I know you all are extremely busy. These are challenging and stressful times and it's wonderful to have you on this presentation this afternoon to talk about an item that nothing much is more important than. And by that, I'm referring to the well-being of our kids and obviously, education is a big part of that. And as such, people are very passionate about their views on the format and the delivery of education as we move into the fall semester. I want to share with you that we read each and every one of your emails and letters that we receive daily. Many of them are in direct opposition to each other, but all of them with well-intentioned and well-reasoned positions. And as such, I'm hoping that we can begin the event today by allowing me to request of you that we give each other the gift of grace and recognize that each of our viewpoints is driven by important interests and values, such as the fact that there's a value to keeping students safe and healthy. There's a value to having them in school with their teachers. There's a value to social distancing, which is important, but classroom space is limited. Providing families with choice and options is extremely important, but so is our need to provide transportation and meals, to clean the rooms thoroughly, to provide technology, and to provide a solid instructional programs. As a part of that, we're aware that as a large district with multiple grade spans, we're going to do our best to keep families together even with students at differing grade levels. But as we do this, the division of students and class size is also important. Providing that strong instructional program is critical, but that means we have to place an emphasis on providing quality professional development, sufficient planning time, and not asking so much of our employees, too much of our employees who need to be at the top of their game in order to serve our students well. So as we move through this program, I'm really hoping we can give each other that all-important gift of grace. Next, I want to assure you that Ventura Unified School District is staying well-informed and acting in a manner that's prudent. We meet with our counterparts, our assistant superintendents, our superintendents, our directors locally, regionally, and statewide to collaborate and get the benefit of the best thinking of our peers. I'm in frequent contact with the county superintendent. In fact, we have another conference call tomorrow with all county superintendents to compare notes about recent developments regionally, which I'll talk about in just a second. I also serve as a part of a statewide superintendent's council to get the best thinking of the California Department of Education and superintendent statewide. And that guidance helps inform and shape the decisions that we make. The team here at the USD has spent countless hours with our teachers, our district and site administration, our collective bargaining leaders, and the school board as well, including two full days of study this past week. And yet, things are changing daily. Today, we learned that Los Angeles Unified, Oakland Unified, San Bernardino City, and San Diego Unified School District have all decided to go on a distance learning platform for the first semester at least this year. And I want to state very clearly that even as we talk with you about our plans moving forward, it's quite possible that we could get further direction that we go distance learning only as we did in the spring, in March. That's not our hope. We would hope that the spread of the virus would be mitigated to a substantial degree that we could have our students with us as often as possible. But as I said, things are changing daily. And yet, even as we recognize that things are changing, I want to share with everyone that even if we had direction from the state to not open our doors in the fall, to full all-day learning for all of our kids, we need to develop models for reopening our schools because someday, we will want to reopen and we need to have our plans in place and not have happened to us what happened to us in March, which was get told on a Thursday night to close your schools and be closed by Monday. So with that, I want to again thank all of you for being here today. I look forward to the discussion. I really appreciate being a part of this wonderful community called Ventura. I feel honored to be your superintendent and we're here to serve you the best way we know how. So with that, I'd like to introduce our Board President Sabrina Rodriguez, who also has a few words of welcome today.
Hi, thank you, Dr. Rice. And I really appreciate having so many people who are interested in hearing what the school year will look like for our community. And I know that I speak for my colleagues when I say we're doing our absolute best to meet the needs that the community has asked us to address. Our primary concern is figuring out a way to provide a quality education to your children, but we always have to bear in mind safety, not only the safety of our students, but the safety of our staff. And as you can imagine, that's a super complex net that we're doing our very best to crack. And I just would ask for your patience because this is a continuously evolving situation and what we thought was true a week ago is very different this week. And so we are continuing to meet. We will continue to do so until we feel like we have a great opportunity for our community. And your feedback is always important to us. It's important to the district staff and we're all available to hear your concerns. So thank you and appreciate your participation.
Okay. And I don't know if our new interim assistant superintendent Donna Rose is on the call yet. If you're on the call, Donna, can you introduce yourself? And if not, she will be on the call shortly, I know. I know she had a prior engagement that was going to be a tight timeline.
No, I'm here. I just got, I was booted off. I just got back on. So I'm here and I'm ready to discuss some health and safety issues and to help inform our families of all the steps that we're going to try and take for their students.
Okay. With that, again, thank you, everybody, for being here. We'll turn it back over to Dr. Cortez and her team of presenters. So, Dr. Cortez?
Thank you, Dr. Rice. I want to just quickly address for those of you who are joining, we're at about 1,650 participants. And so rather than using the raise hand function or the chat function, we will be engaging with our audience in a different way. So Mosquitos, maybe before we get started, you can just explain that one more time.
Absolutely. Thank you. So if you do have a question at any point during our town hall today, you can do one of two things. Either put that in the Q and A section here on our Zoom call or you can email it to greatideas@venturausd.org and I will be monitoring those. We will be answering as many of those questions as we can at the end of the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we launch the next slide, I just want to take a moment on behalf of Dr. Rice and the Board of Trustees to acknowledge our bargaining unit president, Carol Peak from our Classified Association and Dan Nelson from our Certificated Association. We could not get through this process without their collaboration. I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge them both. To open with, we just want to set the stage for the amount of time and effort and considerations that have gone into bringing these models to you today. Again, to Dr. Rice's point, our guidance changes frequently, sometimes daily. And so regardless of when schools open on-site, we know that we will be opening to students in August. And so we need to have some workable models so that when the conditions are safe, we can open in a way that is easily set to transition from an in-person setting back to a distance learning setting and vice versa. So we've had over 250 distance learning committee members made of a variety of folks from different positions in schools who have worked on these models we will present in a way that they agonized over these lists of conditions. Everything from the important social distancing requirements and safety to innovation, transportation, length versus frequency when it comes to instruction, combination classes, one-to-one device distribution, special education services, so much to consider. And all of this was considered before these models were brought forward. I also want to remind the public that we will be offering a session in Spanish tomorrow evening. And now to take a moment to pivot to Ms. Donna Rose, our Assistant Interim Superintendent, who will talk about our planning specifically with regard to health and safety.
Okay, thank you, Danielle. As Danielle talked about the committee's meeting on those educational models, we've also had a lot of activity and staff meeting on the business and the facilities and the health and safety side to consider all the advice and guidance that were being given. We have to develop, and it's in process, a plan for the reopening that is going to be board-approved. It'll be submitted to the Ventura County Office of Education and it will also be in line with all of the guidelines from Ventura County Public Health, which is the local entity that is really driving a lot of the information that we're going to get and that we have been getting to develop these plans. These plans have to be very detailed and they're going to be considering many factors. I've listed some of them on this slide, but there are many more. But they include the personal protective equipment that is going to be available for staff and in cases for students such as extra masks, cleaning protocols, social distancing requirements, training of staff, students, visitors on the campus, the learning models, the site scheduling, that the way it's going to be impacted, transportation considerations, extracurricular activities, health office protocols and protocols that will be in place for what if employees or students have illness, screening process, and then many, many, many other topics. So these plans are already in process. We're already working on developing this document. Guidelines and principles that we're using to build all of our health and safety plans have to do with preventing staffing students that are ill or having symptoms from coming to school and to be in close contact with others if somebody has COVID symptoms. Promoting and utilizing the accepted methods of hygiene that reduces the virus spread. Using the physical distancing, which is guidance is six feet to reduce the spread wherever possible. The use of face coverings, which right now is mandated for staff and students, and implementing enhanced cleaning and disinfecting protocols throughout the day and on a daily basis to keep surfaces and equipment clean. We have, we will be considering it from the district-wide standpoint for what will be in place everywhere. And then there's also going to be specifics for sites and specific classrooms. District-wide screening checks, we will have a policy for that. And that means that as students and staff are entering campuses, there's going to be a screening process to make sure that they're not ill that day and they don't have symptoms. Mandatory mask policy for state and local requirements. And there are going to be some exceptions where maybe somebody has specific medical reasons that we will have to work with. Hand sanitizing supplies, stations throughout the campuses and every single classroom will have hand sanitizing stations, additional hand washing stations on campuses where they can be useful. Separate sick room space needs to be identified on each campus so that if there is a student that develops symptoms during the day or is identified on entry in the morning, that they could be isolated. Appropriate personal protective equipment. And we have, we already have supplies in-house. We have many, many more supplies on order and the state is providing initial supply. Plus, we're ordering more equipment every day. So that includes masks, thermometers, face shields, hand sanitizer, gloves, gowns, many, many pieces of equipment that we feel our staff and students will need. There's going to be identified staff liaisons for the district and also at every school site. And these will be people that will be specifically trained on what you do in situations if you identify or think you have a risk with a student or a staff. And they will be in contact with Ventura Public County Health Office. There will be protocols identified if there are identified cases on a campus or in a classroom. And those protocols will guide what we do identify and communications that will go out. We've already started creating and putting in plexiglass partitions that will be used in offices and other spaces where the public interaction is prevalent. And we've already developed enhanced cleaning schedules. And this will include increased disinfection of spaces and classrooms and sanitation by our custodial staff. We are also having signage produced that will be all throughout our campuses. And these will be from hand washing guidelines, social distancing guidelines, directional traffic flows to keep people moving in one direction, markers for students on where they stand, many, many, many different signage that will be on campuses to help identify and help students and staff. The next slide. From a facility standpoint, we are working with our maintenance and custodial crews to have the protocols updated with enhanced cleaning and also looking at site and schedules. And that may mean that we're going to have extra staff on campuses to do, to robe the campuses during the days to get high-touch surfaces. Disinfection of buses in between student groups will be one of those factors. Daily disinfectant of, disinfection of shared spaces, bathrooms, libraries, any other spaces that need, that may have students coming in and out will have to be frequently cleaned. Social distancing is part of the facilities project that they've already been working on. They've been visiting every campus, looking at all the classrooms and identifying how many students can fit in a classroom and maintain the six-foot distance. And every site is going to have some differences. Every classroom has some differences in some cases and each site has to have assessment of their needs. So that's up that we started weeks ago and is continuing. Ordering of additional supplies, I mentioned, one of the things I wanted to mention that we've talked about with the board are disinfecting spray misters. And if you've seen any kind of commercials on what's happening in transit stations on airlines, buses, the spray misters can lay down very quickly a layer of disinfectant spray and can cover a classroom in minutes and it dries in minutes and it's very effective and it's EPA-approved and it kills COVID and other germs, by the way. So those are an item that we are going to have and we're going to train our staff, our custodial staff, on how to use those. Training of all staff, custodial staff on enhanced cleaning and what PE they need to wear and disinfecting protocols. And then hiring extra staff, I mentioned, that would be going throughout campuses during the day to circulate to get additional cleaning in. Next slide, please. Okay. I mentioned that every site will have some differences. So on a site-by-site evaluation, we'll be looking at where we place signs and what that looks like. The classroom social distancing of desks will be worked on with principals and teachers at sites. Consideration of outdoor spaces, fresh air is something that is good to be in for COVID. And looking at each campus on spaces that could be used for lunchtime PE, possibly alternative to classroom when needed. Adjustments to the nutrition schedules. A lot of these decisions have to be made when the school models are chosen, but nutrition schedules and how we serve meals to kids and maintain social distancing and safe meal distribution will definitely be a factor in our plan. Minimizing group gatherings and in-person staff meetings would be another item that will be addressed in the plans. Adjusting emergency plans. Adjusting emergency plans for drills and evacuations. Keeping classroom doors and windows open is another recommendation that will, weather permitting, will help achieve a better airflow. Exterior bathrooms are the same thing. And then also looking at how we can supervise students and making sure that there's a smaller number of students in bathrooms at any one time. Communications, and that will be a definite part of this plan and to parents and staff and training to how to do self-screening, stay in at home if ill, and then any changes as they occur. And the last point here on the site operations is the identified space for a sick room. Now, on these slides, I just wanted to highlight some of the major things that will be in the plan, but there will be more. There will be many more items that will be contained within these plans. And, and also we have to be adaptable as situation changes, as we getting different guidance. We will have to adapt and change these plans as we go through it. So those are the highlights, and of course, the safety and wellness of our students and staff are, is our highest priority. And we will be working to make sure that we address all issues that will affect that. And I think it goes back now to Danielle for classroom modeling.
Yes, thank you very much, Assistant Superintendent Rose. In addition to the multiple safety considerations that she just explained so eloquently, I want to remind the public of the slides that we put up on considerations before we start to talk to our special guests and others about models. So in addition to all the healthy, health and safety, social distancing, this committee met at least 16 times for well over 60 hours to talk about transportation, active versus passive screening, the cleaning frequency for classrooms, the ability to provide supports, supporting students who need intervention, supporting, supporting students who need gate support, childcare considerations, recess break, school of choice considerations, English learner supports, dual language or two-way immersion supports, universal design for learning cohort sizes, combination classes, classroom locations, and more considerations. So to these special guests this evening and to all the well over 250 committee members, we applaud you. We thank you for your, your tireless unpaid efforts and for all the complex considerations that you had launching into these model recommendations. So to go and to introduce each of our esteemed guests this evening, we have elementary teacher Melissa Miller, middle school assistant principal Pavel Escobedo Garcia. We also have Darcy Duffy, teacher, parent educator Kathy Saldana, counselor who is our rep but not features as a panelist, Cherry Dath, special education teacher Morgan Cuco, assistant director Carrie Newley of Special Education, director Marcus Conance of Special Education, athletic director Dave Hess, El Camino teacher Diane Fergus, flex teacher Darcy Duffy, principals Claudia Codil and Principal Harris. In addition to Mr. Principal Cohen, who I don't believe is a panelist, but is on the call. Of course, our nurse, Ms. Anne Marie Biddling-Meyer. It's all been a team effort, but these are the folks that are highlighted this evening as our special guests.
Dr. Cortez?
Yes, Dr. Isis.
Just jump in real quick. I am scrolling through the questions and trying to answer some. And as I'm scrolling through there, I'm seeing a repeated reference to the participants inability to see the speaker. So I don't know if that can be manipulated where whoever's talking can be somehow elevated to the top of the screen or if you can find a way to make sure that the speaker is visible while you are sharing the slide. I have several people saying they're not able to do that on their end.
Yes, Dr. Isis, initially we have the ASL interpreter set to spotlight. And so now the ASL interpreter is not set to spotlight. So that's one way that we've adjusted with regard to not being able to see the speakers. That may or may not be the need for someone viewing to minimize the part of the screen and open up their gallery. But I don't know of any setting that doesn't have that set. So what I can do is if each person speaks, I can switch them to be the spotlight speaker. But then we will use, lose the view of the other panelists. So I will do my best to make sure that we are making the speaker the spotlight person when each person speaks, if that sounds agreeable.
My view video is blocked by host, so it's Darcy. If you'd like to fix that, then I'm happy to be on screen.
I am inviting you to add your audio, so that should be resolved momentarily. Thank you for that. All right, so with, I think our logistics set, maybe mosquitoes because now we're up to 1,800 participants. One quick reminder about the way that we'll be handling questions because I'm seeing lots of hands going up.
Yes, thank you. So any questions that you have, you may send them through the Q and A section here on Zoom. Or you can send them to greatideas@venturusd.org. We are not going to be, we are not going to be able to get to all of them before we end, but we will answer as many of them as we can at the end of this presentation. Many of them are similar questions, so we should be able to get to quite a few of them.
Thank you for that. All right, I'll begin with some opening disclaimers. All of these plans are tentative. We've addressed the fact that our dynamics, conditions, and guidance changes daily. We also want to say first and foremost that none of our hybrid options are optimal. None of our 100% distance learning options are optimal. What is optimal to all of us in the Ventura Unified School District is to have all of our students on our campuses every single day in a way that is safe. And we just know that right now the conditions don't permit that. The other piece I mentioned earlier about our esteemed bargaining union presidents, and all of our models have yet to be negotiated with our labor agreement system. So those are our disclaimers this evening. I also want to let you know that rather than trying to take what we've always done and envision that in a distance learning or hybrid scenario, all of our committee members were tasked with looking towards the future and bringing innovation not only into the models you will see, but into the day-to-day classrooms, whether that's online or in person. So we're very excited that they took an innovative stance from the very beginning. We also want to take a moment to thank all of you, our parents, our families, our guardians, our students, our staff, our siblings, everyone who bared with us as we changed our procedures, practices, and lives overnight back in March. It's been a long road, and we appreciate all of your patience and efforts and your flexibility. So if we might now, Mr. Pavel Escobedo Garcia, if you wouldn't mind going through these definitions.
Dr. Cortez, I'm going to jump in for a second. Folks do not have speaker view when it comes to webinar. And so in order for our ASL interpreter to be seen, they must be highlighted, spotlighted.
So if I highlight Mr. Escobedo Garcia, then we will lose the ASL interpreter?
Yes, she will.
So I'm going to pivot back for Americans with Disabilities Act and just to be, make sure we're conscientable and making sure that everybody can at least hear. We're going to make sure in one format, another to go back, and we're going to spotlight our ASL interpreter. So give me one moment to adjust. We really want to make this accessible to as many folks as possible. Thank you for that note. It's been adjusted. Assistant Principal Escobedo Garcia, thank you for your patience.
Good evening, everyone. So I'm Pavel Escobedo Garcia, Assistant Principal at the campus middle school. And as we go through our presentation this evening, it's really important for us to understand some of the terminology that's going to be utilized throughout the presentation. And that's starting with our traditional brick-and-mortar approach to education. And that, that is where students are present in school and our teachers providing that direct instruction. Obviously, as we transition distance learning, that has both mostly online. As we move, as we think about the fall, it's definitely teachers in one location and students in a separate location. Synchronous versus asynchronous learning. Synchronous learning where students participate online, learning at a schedule or a given set of time. And asynchronous where students participate online but at different times and pace from the teacher. And for us, especially important this evening is understanding the hybrid learning or hybrid approach where it's really a combination of both brick-and-mortar and distance learning models.
Thank you very much. We're actually very excited to share with the public the enhancements to our distinct learning supports as we have enhanced our programs since our emergency teaching. Mr. Escobedo Garcia, is there something where you could continue on our behalf, please? Pardon me, I'm going to unmute you. Thank you.
Perfect. So like Dr. Cortez mentioned, so definitely the enhancements to our model are going to be crucial as we move forward. So in this system, so definitely customized courses in the learning platforms directly modified by the teacher is going to be important feedback on student work. And obviously, the communication piece with families is going to be important. And in terms of distance courses, the support provided will be definitely alignment to the state and federal standards, including grade level, border, the upper curriculum, and also material built by our credential VUSD teachers. And that's work that has already started and has been happening.
Thank you kindly. I also want to say loud and clearly, and I know that our other panelists will repeat this, please, but we will have textbooks, workbooks, and paper pencil options for our students in a distance learning situation or a hybrid situation, key parts to the curriculum that weren't available during emergency teaching. We'll begin with the littlest of littles, talking about the Early Intervention Center, our Jump Start preschool, and move on into elementary. I know Ms. McNella Shoder is ready, and maybe we'll start there with infants, toddlers at the Intervention Center.
Yes, good afternoon. So starting with our very youngest in our infant program. And this is typically a home-based program, and we will be looking to transition it to a little more of a school-based model in terms of bringing individual families into our site to work with in a system that provides safety for all involved and then also provides support through a Google Classroom extension activity for those families. Moving on to our preschool-age students who receive special education services, we're looking to bring them on campus up to four days a week potentially and have them in small cohorts within our classroom. As Dr. Cortez has mentioned, we would be looking to also supplement any home services, home instruction with manipulative, with tasks that we can get into the hands of students and families. And certainly because we know parent partners are essential in education, we're looking at acquiring a parent engagement partnership curriculum that provides activities for the home setting and school setting as well that we anticipate being something that will work in any environment in which our students are in for their educational experience. And then the other piece is looking at potential distance learning platforms. For if we were in a distance learning model, we would be utilizing the CSO application embedded within the Canvas program, Canvas being the program that was utilized in the spring. So our parents are a little familiar with it. And then most of the activities would be within the CSO program, and our students would be accessing those via iPads. So that's what we're looking to do at the Early Intervention Center for students that might receive speech services, related occupational therapy services. Our director Conance will speak to this shortly. And but we will be looking to provide those services via whatever is written into the students' individualized program via their IEP. So I know Ms. Principal Codil is going on to the Jump Start and elementary programs as well.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for being here. My name is Claudia Codil. I'm the principal of Montalvo. And I just wanted to explain a little bit about what you can expect for your younger learners. So teachers are now able to customize their Canvas content a little bit more. There's been more training. And also, we are implementing CSO, which is a much younger learner-friendly format. It is going to be embedded into Canvas, and we look forward to having our younger learners really engage in that program. It will make for a little bit more independence, and they will be able to express themselves a little bit more easily because they are in a format that's more friendly for them. Also, we got feedback from parents and staff that there's a need for students to practice their social emotional learning skills, self-regulation, and really being able to deal with their emotions and learn how to express themselves. And then also culturally responsive teaching, which is appropriate for all students.
Thank you. And Ms. Codil, so all of those enhancements go along for our Jump Start as well. You have a Jump Start at your site. I would imagine you're just as excited as coordinator got to be to see these enhancements move forward. So thank you very much.
Definitely. And I'd like to also say that for our younger learners, having workbooks and things like that at home and paper pencil to work on their fine motor will also be a tremendous enhancement and boost for their learning.
Thank you.
This is an example of what you might expect to see in CSO, where the four icons that you see to the left are very easy to maneuver for students. They can navigate this program much more easily than they could in Canvas and, or Canvas alone. And as you can see on this, it's very large print. It's easy to navigate, and the students will find much more success in this program.
Thank you. I'd like to add that we will be replacing 100% of our iPad devices. We know that the ones that we distributed were from many prior generations of iPads. And so we're very excited about that enhancement to make sure we have full functionality of all of our distance learning platforms that use iPads.
And a testament to the social emotional learning piece, just talking about their feelings. Our students in this quarantine have had lots of feels, and we just want them to be able to put language to those feelings. And so this is part of what they might expect to see in the coming fall. And now I'm going to turn it over to Melissa Miller, who is a teacher at Elmerst.
Hey, everybody. Good afternoon, and thank you again for joining us. I wanted to share some information about how our learning platform will look for grades three through high school. We will be using Canvas as our learning management system with Google Apps integrated. Google Apps would be things like slides, sheets, docs, different Google Apps that your child may or may not already be familiar with. Our learning platform will have individualized teacher customizations and opportunities for teachers to put their own spice and creativity. And we will also be including lessons on culturally responsive teaching, social emotional check-ins for children, and equity. In regards to, or as an example of how teachers can put their own spin on things, this would be an example of a primary welcome page. And this would be an example of a secondary, grades six through 12, welcome page in Canvas. Just two different examples of how teachers can use their creativity and make the platform or the jump-in or home feel like something that they might be able to connect with their own teacher better. And I'm going to turn it over to Principal Beth Harris to share about some enhancements we have for you.
Hello, everyone. We did discuss a little bit about this already, but let me just reiterate that one of the things that wasn't possible in emergency learning was the opportunity to send home our consumables from our curriculum as well as other paper and pencil activities. And we know that by including those things, that it will feel a lot at home like regular school. Students will have an opportunity to have workbooks and supplies that will really increase engagement and have the opportunity for the teacher to directly teach with materials that the students already have on hand. We're very excited about these hands-on activities. In addition to the one-to-one devices that students will have, we know that the combination of these two things will allow for less screen time, which is important for some students. And we know that there will also be district-supported Wi-Fi, all of those enhancements to make sure that when we are doing distance learning, we are doing it in a organized and planned-out method to increase those enhancements for learning.
Thank you. I'll add that when it is safe to open to a hybrid model, we're also very excited about that one-to-one rollout where when your students are onsite, they'll have access to a device so that they can learn how to use the device, how to use the platforms, and become expert learners with them and as well as being able to collaborate safely in a digital environment. Turning to some schedule options.
I'm going to cover those tonight, Dr. Cortez.
Thank you, Principal Harris.
Sure. So we are going to have an opportunity to talk about two different models today. Again, the Distance Learning Committee has discussed numerous models, and these are the two that have come to the forefront. One is the model that we call AB. And in this model, due to social distancing guidelines, we will divide the students into two equal cohorts. One group of students, the first cohort, A.
One group of students, the first cohort A, will come on Monday and Tuesday. The second group of students in cohort B will come on Thursday and Friday, and all students and staff will be distance learning on Wednesday. So in the AB model, the arrival and dismissal times are 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM with staggered entry and exits. This model prioritizes duration with longer chunks of learning time that happen less often. There will be a recess and a lunch break, and the classrooms will be cleaned each evening as well as throughout the day by the custodial staff on hand. Transportation in this model is limited and masks are required. In the second model, which we call the AMPM model, students will come on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday. But again, being split for social distancing, one group will come in the AM and the other group will come in the PM. So what we're calling AM is 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM, again with staggered entry and exits. And the PM is noon to 3:00, also with staggered entry and exits. Both the AM and the PM group will include a 20-minute recess. These classes will be cleaned each evening as well. There will be limited time for cleaning between the AM and PM cohorts. Transportation in this model is also limited, and masks will be required.
Dr. Cortez, I'm going to talk about some of the pros for the model that we are terming AB. Again, the AB model is assuming that Group A comes on Monday and Tuesday with everybody distance learning on Wednesday, and Group B coming on Thursday and Friday. So some of the pros that we wanted to shed some light on for model AB is that this allows teachers time to manage their distance learning students. It allows for deeper cleaning on Wednesdays in addition to the evenings, but Wednesday would give more time. It's also, if needed, it would be easier to split into four groups if we needed to change our numbering at all. The number of days for Group A and Group B are similar, so one group would not get more time than the other. And there's more time in the school day to offset lost time with those staggered entry and exit times that we discussed.
And with any model, there along with the pros, there will also be considerations and concerns, and I'm going to review those today. So with the considerations, there is a longer day. It is eight to two with the exception of our TK friends and perhaps kindergarten that would not be there that long. But with that, there is more staff needed. There's more staff needed for supervision. There's more staff needed to help with entrance and pickup. So we would need additional staff for that purpose. Also, parent pickup, they may have different times with kindergarten and TK, and that would be a concern with that. And then also, there are one to two Mondays where instruction would be lost because those days are non-instructional days.
Pivoting to the AMPM model, again, this is where students come Monday, Tuesday, distance learning on Wednesday, and come back on Thursday, Friday, but are put into an AM or a PM cohort. Some of the pros that we noticed for the AMPM model, there could be some social emotional advantages of seeing students four days a week instead of two. There could be some behavioral advantages of seeing them four days instead of two. Teachers may be able to strengthen connections more effectively, and we're having discussions but no decisions on combo classes, possibly being one grade in the morning and one grade in the afternoon if siblings could be arranged that way. Again, this is just a discussion and not a decision.
And considerations regarding the AMPM model would be that we would need additional time for staggered entry and exit. So that would be an additional amount of time upon entrance and leaving that we would need to account for. Also, active screening measures would be difficult because the groups would be passing each other. Excuse me, the PM group would need to arrive for lunch. Late pickups would be a concern for the AM session because the PM students would already be on campus. Also, transportation would be a concern because our transportation department is also transporting students to other sites. Additional custodian and staff needs would need to happen with the one hour that we have between the AM group and the PM group to clean and disinfect classrooms. Also, there will be a reduced distance learning management time for teachers to make sure that the online component is robust and rigorous and appropriate for our students. Furthermore, AM is typically more desirable for families, and we would need to make sure that we had enough students in PM as well and to make it balanced.
I want to take this moment to address the many questions that we're receiving on childcare and to say that the Ventura Unified School District is committed to coming up with safe childcare options for our students and for our staff members' families. At the same time, we need to know our working models first. Our space considerations are a constraint that needs to be managed before we can make definitive decisions with regard to childcare. Whether we're having an AB model, an AMP model, and what the secondary model looks like will determine our capacity to be able to host childcare options. Please do know that our directors in charge of childcare in the district have been working hand-in-hand with our community partners and with our district grant-funded partners, and they are at the ready to provide these services. As soon as we get a decision on the models, we'll leap into action to make sure that we're able to provide options for our families. Pivoting to middle school and high school.
Hi, I'm going to be speaking to that. I'm Darcy Duffy, and you can go ahead and advance to the next slide. We are looking at one model right now. It's the AB model. And with that, you'll see in just a moment when the slide pops up, students go to school Monday and Tuesday if they are in Group A, and they will be in block schedule. So your secondary student would go to periods one, three, five, and seven, if they have a seventh period, on Monday. And then on Tuesday, they would go to two, four, and six. And if they have a zero period, that would be factored in there as well. Wednesday would be distance learning day for management on that. And then on Thursday, Friday, we repeat the process with Group B. The minutes are a rough estimate right there because they still need to be determined, but this is the model in general that is being proposed as the hybrid option. On our next slide, we have the pros to this model. The pros to this model are that students get to see their teachers once a week in person. They'd all be on campus twice weekly. When designing classes, more time in person means more interaction, and it's more friendly to teachers than designing online learning opportunities. And then this also is favorable to have one day for teachers to manage the distance learning so they can prioritize that. Some considerations that come with this model, our students will need to complete coursework for all of their classes in one week. We explored different versions that could have done half their classes one and half the others. So this would be working on all their classes within a week. And then we would be splitting schools into two groups, most likely by a split in the alphabet, something similar to A through L, M through Z, and of course, factoring households. There's a list in our system by household. So if your family has different last names as a blended family, that would be considered and put into a group together. One of the considerations is when we make this split, that doesn't necessarily mean that each class will split evenly. So we might have a class of 36 that splits into 23 and 13. So the considerations we'd have to account for and solve are where do students who cannot fit in those classrooms go to be supervised? How can we accommodate that? Would teachers need to move to a larger room? Could that impact learning and the quality of learning? And if we have classes that are largely unbalanced, would we add a period to the master schedule to accommodate that? So those are all considerations that we would have to look into and plan for that. And so that is the AB model that's being considered. And next step, I believe, is our special education team.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Duffy. As we're transitioning to special education, I just want to reiterate the point that all times, periods, minutes, et cetera, are very tentative. We are seeking feedback from our families and from our staff with regard to all of the models. We also are trying to mitigate that long list of concerns we showed you. So please know that there are adjustments that are definitely foreseeable of what those will be. We rely heavily on your survey feedback. So we'll be pivoting to the survey to make sure everybody has access to that before we end, but we want to explain just again how important it is to get feedback on the hybrid models. Thank you. Director Conance, you and your team, I know that special education has been at the forefront of our thinking ever since closure, and we want to make sure that we take some time to answer some trends and themes that we've seen. Thank you.
Absolutely correct, Dr. Cortez. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So a lot of what we're doing in special education right now is contingent on the finalized model for instruction as pertains to what we're talking about here tonight, but in concert with the developing guidance, as Dr. Rice alluded to earlier, as things develop in a continual fashion. But VUSD will be following the each student's most recently agreed upon IEP in order to determine services and implement those services under the construct of any of the models, also continuing to follow state and federal special education regulations. Assessments in IEP meetings will continue to be conducted while observing health and safety guidelines. To date, we've been doing our IEPs online, virtually over Zoom, and our assessment protocols are coming online, our systems for facilitating those assessments while maintaining safety and protective measures for all our emerging. Additionally, new guidance is that we will be potentially, well, not potentially, we'll be developing narratives in the IEPs going forward as to what in the event of a closure, what these services will look like being provided under those constraints as well. So that's a feature that will be coming online soon. And our child find activities will continue as well. Our range of services that will be made available in the new year will remain largely intact. Everything from speech therapy to counseling, specialized academic instruction, NPA service provisions, ERSIS coeds, and our related services, I mentioned speech therapy, but occupational therapy, adapted physical education, our DHH services, vision services, behavior support. And our staff and faculty will be in the in the mix, as it were, with the provision of all these, which also including our invaluable team of paraeducators. Our paraeducator force will be front and center as well.
Thank you. And again, to all of our paraeducators out there, know that you've had representation on the committee developing these models. We very much want to take a moment to thank Ms. Kathy Saldana, who's been on these calls, along with your best president, Carol Peak.
So as mentioned, once a final district-wide model is adopted, each student's individualized placement and services will be analyzed to determine what the best mechanism is for delivering those services within the construct of the district model in a way that upholds the values of the USC and our commitment to our students in maximizing each and every student's access to instructional services, the related services, and the additional supports made available to them in their IEPs.
Thank you. Turning our eyes now to dual language and two-way immersion.
Okay, so that would be me again. So we are looking at dual immersion and really trying to enhance the opportunity that our students have in our dual immersion programs. So with the offerings that we have for students that are currently enrolled, we are going to continue with Benchmark Adelante, which will be embedded into Canvas, video conferencing for language modeling and oral language practice. We know that that was a huge missing component during emergency teaching because language acquisition, as we know, requires students to speak the target language. And so it is our hope and our plan to have students really practicing their language more during video conferencing time. Also, integrated thematic units for vocabulary development, not just the use of Benchmark, but also what teachers do best, which is create opportunities for language development and vocabulary development through the use of thematic units. Also, if we are able to do the hybrid model, we would like to do some Spanish language development groups and English language development groups for students as well. And if we are fully distanced, we can do that via video conferencing as well. K1 will be able to use Estreita, which is a wonderful Spanish phonics program, which will help to enhance the early literacy for our budding bilinguals. And then Pavel Escobedo Garcia will also be talking about the middle school TWI piece.
Thank you, Claudia. So very similar to the elementary, definitely the incorporation of those thematic units. But in a hybrid model, the opportunity for students to have continuation and the project-based learning units that they will be taking part in the classroom that have shown our students who have great success in the classroom will definitely be available for them, again, with the idea that teachers will be providing them with those opportunities to continue engaging in activities that promote language acquisition with the support given in the classroom and in the remote setting as well. At the middle school level, TWI students are offered the opportunity to take a zero-period class, and that is a consideration that is still being discussed by the committee as well.
Thank you. Bringing our attention to some of our educational options, Ventura Unified has a long history of choices and making sure that our families have options. And we'll turn now to Director Guerrero, El Camino.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Hector Guerrero, Director of Educational Options for Ventura Unified, also principal of El Camino High School, independent study, early college, high school that we have for our students. Our students at El Camino take their high school classes but at the same time are taking classes at Ventura College. It is one of the requirements for our students. Students get their instruction through the independent study delivery model. So our students will meet in individualized meetings with our teachers, whether in person or via Zoom, once, at least once a week, to be able to go through the curriculum and the work that they've been able to complete throughout the week. Our courses, we offer everything from college prep to the AP classes, college-level classes as well, leadership STEM options are available for our students. And we provide a very flexible schedule that allows our students the opportunity to have employment, internships, community service, be involved with athletics and the arts. It's a very flexible environment for all of our students.
Thank you. And speaking of flex and flexibility, I know this next program is something near and dear to your heart, Director Guerrero. But I also think we have a teacher slated to explain our flex program. This is Duffy.
Yes. I had the pleasure of getting to work with some of our flex students this spring when we launched the program. I worked with six different students who had a variety of needs, and we tailored the program for each of them. And so they were fully online, except they chose a couple classes to remain in at Foothill, which is the site that we were at. So they stayed in their classes that they really enjoyed, or that made the most sense to stay in person depending on their needs. So that is the flex piece of it. And then they're allowed to focus. So what they did is some students just worked on one class at a time online. And so we set it up that they needed to finish that in about four weeks or five weeks, depending on what they needed to get through. And then they can move on to the next class so that they could stay really focused on what they were doing. And the stay is that they continue to be enrolled in their classes that they really enjoyed on their campus. So really great option for some of our families depending on needs. We had, I had worked with a specialized student. I worked with a student who was struggling with mental health. I worked with a few students who just wanted to be at home and didn't want to be at school. And so there's lots of different students that fit this model well. And where I know that there's really great plans to expand this and to improve it in the year to come. So if there's a couple classes that you would really like to do in person, but online seems like the best fit, definitely consider joining the but online seems like the best fit, definitely consider joining the flex program.
Thank you. I'll briefly add that our flex program is an iterative development. This is what we have to offer for our flex program in a pandemic. But we have our eyes on a long-term program that would include significant enhancements when it comes to career tech, education, and other ways to make sure that we are engaging students who need to be ready for college and careers. Next up, athletics. Athletic Director Hess.
Hi, good evening. My name is David Hess. I'm the Athletic Director at Ventura High School. I am also a member of the C I F Southern Sections Executive Committee. I wanted to say a few things. First of all, Ventura Unified recognizes how important interscholastic athletics is for many of our kids, and we are committed to providing as much athletic competition as the situation allows. We are right now in a position where we are waiting for an announcement from the state C I F, which we have been told will come out a week from today. On Monday, July 20, they will announce basically calendars of when seasons will start, provided that they don't start as normal in August, which right now is looking pretty unlikely. So we'll know a lot more then. We have been working on a plan. The Athletic Directors at Buena and Foothill, Sean Strobel and Jamal Brown, along with a bunch of other people, have been working on making sure that when we do get a chance to start working with kids again, that we can do it safely, do it in a way that benefits the athletes and helps to prepare them so that we are ready to go once we get the green light for being allowed to have athletic competition. Thank you.
Thank you. So we've got a little past the hour we had planned to spend with you all. We know that your time is important, and many of you may have to turn your attention to other matters. We're going to stay on and field some of the questions that have come in through email and also through the Q and A. But we do want to direct your attention to the parent surveys that are out for your review. We will email this out through Mosquitos once we have finished this town hall meeting to make sure that you have this information. And we also know there's been a few glitches when it comes to the survey. And although we figured out most of them, we just heard recently on this presentation that there might be one or two remaining. So we'll make sure that we have those ironed out for you. So we do want to thank those of you who've been with us so far. We've been up to 1,800 participants at one time. This is the end of the presentation mode for us for this evening, but we will continue with questions and answers. I'm going to leave this slide up for just one moment to make sure people have access to the email. Sure, they want to put in a question now. And also, if you're on the webinar, you can use the question and answer feature. Otherwise, we'll end with a heartfelt thank you to all of you. We know that this is not what you signed up for when you brought us your children last August. We thank you so much for your quick pivot to emergency teaching and learning. We know that it's not easy to help your children learn while you're trying to balance your lives, your careers, your grocery shopping. And we couldn't ask for more supportive group of families. It is an honor and a privilege to serve you all. Dr. Rice, before we pivot to question and answers, was there anything you wanted to add?
Dr. Cortez, if I might just ask, for those parents, we've had a lot of comments about the link in the survey and not being able to go past page two. And I know there is a fix to that. Could someone address that for parents who are struggling with the survey?
We, Cortez, I'm going to recommend one thing as we move forward regarding this survey. It was fixed, as far as we know, from our technology services folks. However, folks do need to refresh their browser in order to pick up the change that was made.
Thank you for that logistical piece. And we'll also stay on, and we can answer Q and A just in the Q and A after we've done to make sure that survey issue is resolved. So thank you for President. Dr. Rice, before we pivot to questions and answers, is there anything you'd like to say to our audience?
Just thanks for being here. Let's get after it. I know there's a lot of people with a lot of questions. I've been trying to type answers fast and furious. So I answered as many as I could online, and I'm ready to field more. Go for it.
Thank you. So Mosquitos, if you wouldn't mind moderating.
Yes. So, Dr. Rice, I'm glad you said that. You're first up. We have three questions that have come up time and time again over the last few weeks, and I would like to read them all to you as they do relate to each other and then have you answer. So the first is from Q and A from, I believe, Chanelle. Now that the governor has closed bars, indoor dining, malls, hair salons, and places of worship as of today, if it is not safe for any of those to be open due to the number of people those places would have, why would we have kids going to school? Our number at V C is increasing, and we should be protecting our kids and teachers. A second comment is from Rebecca. Many of us are working parents and are not in a position to stay home from work during the school year, much less pick our children up at noon and assist with distance learning during the workday. If schools are not offering a five-day full-day option, unfortunately, our elementary school-age children need to be in care elsewhere during the day, which adds to their exposure risk. Please open your schools. And then finally, from the Q and A, all private schools are returning to onsite five days a week learning. Why would Ventura Unified not do the same? So if you can please address the fact as to why we would open our doors and why we might have to do distance learning.
Okay. So hopefully, those of you who are still on the call would recognize the diametrically opposed insinuations that are laden in those questions. And that's what I was referring to earlier, is that very reasonable people are very passionate about their own perspectives and their own interests and their needs for their kids and families. So what I would share with you, let me talk about the first piece, which is, why would we be talking about opening schools? First of all, I think it's correct to acknowledge that kids spending time with their teachers is to be valued. There's no replacing the value of a kid's interactions with their teachers. No amount of distance learning or homework or independent study can replace the value of that teacher working with that student. That being said, I also want to say that, plain and simple, the legislature in California recently passed S B ninety-eight, which put in place California Education Codes forty-five, three, oh, two, and forty-five, three, oh, four. And I want to read to you and be very clear about this from that section that says, "Local educational agencies shall offer in-person instruction and may offer distance learning pursuant to the requirements of this part." And later, forty-five, three, I'm sorry, forty-three, five, oh, four, contains another direct statement that says, "Local educational agencies shall offer in-person instruction to the greatest extent possible." So if you're asking why we're doing it, it's because, one, in-person education is good for kids, and, two, it's because the law requires it to the greatest degree possible. What I will say is that the obvious flaw in that argument is that we have some large school districts simply refusing to do that. How that happened, I don't know. That's news to us as recently as this morning. And I think I shared with you earlier that we're going to track those developments as we can. I also want to share with you that the very clear guidance that we have from the County Office of Education Superintendent and the Director of the Ventura County Public Health Agency is to follow local guidance when there's a discrepancy between local guidance and state guidance. And right now, local guidance is to require all public school districts in the county to submit a plan to the County Office of Education that the County Office of Education will have to review and approve on behalf of Dr. Levin, the head of the Ventura County Public Health. And the nature of the presentation today was meant to inform you all as to the varying elements of that plan. There was another question you asked me about in terms of many working parents, why can't we just have a five-day option? What I would say about that from the other end is that we don't have, we simply don't have enough classroom space to accommodate all kids in school every day and follow the guidance we have from the Ventura County Public Health for appropriate social distancing, which is, which right now is six feet. In order to make sure that we were on solid ground with that guidance, I specifically asked the County Superintendent and the head of the Ventura County Public Health, if a school district in the county submitted a plan to you that included all kids all day without social distancing, is there any chance that that plan would be approved, as long as we had masks and washing hands and all of that, active screening, all of the measures we can think of? And the answer I got back was absolutely not. There's no substitute, I'm sorry, for social distancing. So when you put the requirement for social distancing in place, it means that, given the classroom space limitations, we can't have everybody in school every day. And if you couple that with the requirement in Ed Code forty-five, three, oh, two, and forty-five, three, oh, four, the only option left is a hybrid option or distance learning options as appropriate, which I think the staff appropriately reviewed with you today. So I hope that answers your question. Ms. Mosquitos, did I miss anything? You asked me like three questions.
I think we're good. I think that answered them all. Thank you, Dr. Rice. Assistant Superintendent Rose, you are up with a few safety questions. The first question is from Jesus. Will students and staff be required to wear masks while in school all day?
Okay, that one is a mandate. And yes, they will be required to wear masks all day.
Thank you. And this question is from Erin. For middle school and high school students, how will social distancing be possible and enforced in the hallways when students are transitioning between periods and classrooms?
Well, the first thing is that we will look at every campus and look at directional flow of trying to manage that students are flowing one direction in and one direction out so that you're not getting a lot of cross traffic. So that's one step. Another step is that there may be, depending on when schedules are chosen, whether there can be staggered times that students are coming and going. So those are the two main ways that you can enforce the social distancing in the hallway. And then it's just training, training and supervision, having the staff out supervising students during those times of transition and having extra supervision on campus to keep reinforcing the importance of this social distancing. Those would be the three most likely steps.
Thank you. And I'm not sure if this one is for you or Dr. Cortez, but this question is from Maria. If you allow people to sign up for the in-person model, and they come to school and tell you they are not going to wear a mask, how will you enforce this?
I'll take that one. And then, Ms. Rose, maybe you can answer if there's something I've left. But in general, this will be required. In the beginning, the students will need reminders, and especially if you think of the littles, they'll have to make an adjustment. But this is a rule that will be enforced. And we do have a 100% distance learning option for families who wearing a mask is not the best option for them. Assistant Superintendent Rose, was there anything you wanted to add to that?
No, I think that covers it. And there will be some special situations where we'll have to look at whether a mask is appropriate for students. They have the option of doing face shields if they feel like that option is more comfortable. But there could be special health considerations that we want to take into effect with some students.
Thank you. Ms. Mosquitos, I just wanted to piggyback on a question earlier about space and social distancing and those pieces. I know it seems very simplistic for us just to move all of our students outdoors. I'm a proponent of outdoor learning, and we really very much want our students to be outdoors as much as possible. But I'd like to remind the community that we do have weather in Ventura Unified. We have extreme heat at times and wind and fires that bring ash. And so everybody outside all the time isn't an option that works for all. So I was asked specifically to address that piece, and I just wanted to add on. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Back to Assistant Superintendent Rose. This question is from Kim. What is the procedure going to look like when a student or staff member or family members of the student or staff do get COVID-19 as far as reporting to other families? Are there issues with releasing medical information due to HIPAA laws, but other parents need to be informed? What does this look like? And will you be letting us know if we've been exposed?
Well, there are issues with putting out personal information for privacy. However, there will be protocols that will be developed. The nurse staff of the district will be working closely with public health on those protocols. And the protocols will include communications. If there's identified cases in a classroom or on a school campus, there will be communications. It just, we can't, for privacy purposes, identify specific students or staff.
Great. And this question, probably the last, oh, no, I have a couple more. This question is from a concerned parent. Substitutes teach in multiple schools. What if they are diagnosed with COVID-19? Do all of the students in each school now have to quarantine and get tested? Who is to pay for the testing?
Substitutes, in terms of notification, there would be communication with public health, and there would be a timeline, and communications will be done appropriate to where that substitute may have had contact. In terms of testing, there are testing procedures that will be identified with the county. And a lot of this is going to be driven by our contact at public health. They're going to work closely. They're going to have dedicated staff working exclusively with the school district. And we will follow the steps that they outline. Getting enough substitutes and having qualified substitutes is an issue that we're looking at right now. And we will definitely want to have as many staff on our substitute list as possible. Dr. Rice, you want to add?
Yeah, I do. Prior to this most recent surge, we were told very clearly that as there were potential outbreaks of the virus in different locales, that it was very unlikely that the district or even a school would be shut down, that instead, the public health would help us with the contact tracing and that the shutdowns or quarantining would happen on a much more isolated basis than what happened in the spring.
Great. This question is from Cassandra. Why can't schools put plastic barriers around desks?
Okay, I'll take that one, too. Right now, we're working on social distancing in the classroom. And we are looking at, you know, to be able to space students six feet apart. And we've gone through every single campus and identified all the square footages and looked at the extra spaces like libraries and cafeterias and other spaces that we might use. If there's a situation where we can't achieve that distancing, then we may look at and consider a physical barrier. So that would be a unique situation that we would consider. We're just, at this point, not considering doing that in every single classroom.
Thank you. Dr. Cortez, this question is from Stacy. I would like to know how it will work for students that are attending a school of choice. If the schools will reopen, but we have the option to choose full-distance learning or the homestead program, would we lose our spot at our school of choice and have to reapply next year? What if it is due to a health-related reason? Why is it that we would lose our spot at the school of choice if they choose homestead?
Thank you. I'll say that those exact specifics remain to be determined based on where our 100% distance learning students, families choose that option, choose, and how many students choose that, and what are our teachers' abilities to maintain those students on their rosters or not. But the short answer of that is that all of our staffing is ready to go for the next school year. And so shifting any sort of staffing to a different location, for example, would potentially change the number of students on a classroom roster in a way that may not be equitable. So the short version is, that is our thinking currently. But the best way to sort this out is with data from families who are choosing that option and make sure that we also have strong staff input with regard to the teachers' preferences for managing their distance learning options. Does that help, Mosquitos?
It does. Thank you. One more question for you. It's actually based on two questions, one from Lindsay and one from Nicole. So if a student started the school year attending school in person in a hybrid model and then chose to go to distance learning later, or the opposite, started on the distance learning model and then wanted to go in person, how quickly could they do that? And would that only be allowed at the semester or the year?
Thank you. Again, that's going to really be dependent on where we provide our services for distance learning, whether that is the classroom teacher level, the site level, or the program level, our ability to maneuver between those two situations, and how quickly we could make that change is very much dependent on that. But in general, any switch from one model to another takes time and consideration. And we want to make sure, especially in the high school, that we consider things like semester courses, how they've been submitted to the university. semester courses, how they've been submitted to the university system for approval, and other considerations.
Great, thank you. This question is from Elizabeth. I believe this is for you, Dr. Cortez. Assuming that the students would be split into, say, A through L and then M through E or some similar other letter, letter split, will it be possible for parents to request to change letter groups for a student in order to accommodate various needs? For example, my child would fall in the A through L group, but two children I drive to and from school from across town would fall in the other group. How do we handle that?
Thank you. One thing I can clarify is, since you're referring to last names, we knew now that we'd be able to meet those, those demands with regard to households. So we have the ability to run reports to make sure that everyone in a household is able to have their schedule set up that way. And then we would have some sort of mechanism for attempting to meet other family needs. But to be very clear, Dr. Rice opened with, we won't be able to provide everything for every family with all of their needs, but we would certainly want to consider each of those things on a case-by-case basis and have a procedure in place to collect that information.
Thank you. Dr. Rice, this question is from a concerned parent. Given the dynamic conditions of the pandemic and the recommendations of the CDC, how much time will parents have to pivot among the different school models? So for example, if a hybrid is open and then we have to pivot to full distance learning, how much time will they be given?
That, I hate to say that, but it depends, right? Like, if we are in control of the decision, we will give you as much lead time as possible. Unfortunately, as we learned last spring, sometimes we get an email or a call or a letter from the governor or from the state superintendent saying, "Shut it down by, by Monday," in which case, we won't have a lot of lead time. We're very much aware that you need lead time as parents and as workers to work with your families and your employers, and we're going to do everything we can to accommodate lead time to the greatest degree we can, knowing that this is such a crazy time that a lot of the decisions and a lot of the timing of this, of the decisions is out of our control. But I appreciate the question, and please be assured, we're going to honor that to the most degree we can.
Thank you.
Ms. Kidos, I had a request to put up the schedule, so I'm going to leave the multiple requests, I put the schedules back up, so I'm going to leave the elementary model up for just a minute, and then soon I'll transition to the secondary model.
Great. Dr. Cortez, this question is from a concerned parent. I think they want some more information on the two-way immersion with regard to distance learning. What supports will be in place for families that do not speak Spanish so that the child receives the education they signed up for? And really, what is the current plan when it comes to the distance learning?
Thank you. So I feel that Ms. Cardell did a beautiful job highlighting some of those pieces, and so Ms. Cardell, we're going to pivot back to you if you might. I'm not sure if this person was able to hear our responses earlier, if you wouldn't mind sharing those for dual language.
Certainly. Could you put the slide back up, please?
Absolutely. Give me one moment. Did it pass it?
Yes, it's after special ed.
Thank you.
There we go. Okay. So I fully understand the frustration, especially for non-Spanish-speaking parents for the dual immersion as it was during emergency teaching. However, we've taken a lot of the feedback that we got from parents and staff regarding how difficult it is to do dual immersion in a distance setting. It's not at all how we intended the program to be structured. So I think that some of the enhancements that we're bringing to next year will certainly help offset some of the frustrations that we had in, in emergency learning or emergency teaching last spring. Some of the enhancements are that we will continue with benchmark in Canvas. That will not change. However, we have builders that are working this summer to make sure that the content for TWI or dual immersion is appropriate and properly scaffolded and that there is a teacher component, and that will come in video conferencing. So in emergency, emergency learning, the video conferencing was not consistent. However, now, we are planning for it to be consistent across teachers. So that being said, students that are in a dual immersion program would have more time, more face-to-face time with their teachers via, via video conferencing to practice their language and to get that receptive, those receptive skills going with the teacher practicing the, the target language with, with students. We will be doing more thematic units so that things aren't just, here's a grammar lesson, but here's a grammar lesson within a bigger unit that will make that grammar lesson not only relevant, but applicable to different settings, because that's what we do with language. Also, being able to support our students in Spanish language development and English language development, our plan is to really target those skills so that when they are online and when they are finding that benchmark material in Canvas, they have a frame of reference.
Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. I was just going to add that our English learners are at the forefront of our thinking right now. I want to make sure, I know that you'll agree with me, Principal Cardell, that we're speaking this in, in terms of our two-way immersion program, but these enhancements that were talked about are needed for all of our English learners regardless of the program that they're sitting in. And so I just wanted to say that very loudly and clearly to all of our families listening. Thank you. Was there anything else that you wanted to add? Pardon me for speaking over you.
No, you're fine. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Dr. Cortez, the next question is from Jacob. What role will the Student Attendance Review Board, or SARB, play while COVID-19 is still active in our community, and how will attendance be tracked for distance learning?
Thank you. So just as our staff needed grace as we transitioned to emergency teaching, our families also needed grace as they transitioned to emergency learning. And so our SAR procedures were paused for those who weren't in those systems prior to our, our COVID closure. We have heard loudly and clearly from our families and from our staff that we need more accountability when it comes to teaching and learning, and the state has made provisions for that. So we will be developing an attendance-taking plan, which includes live video conferencing and/or assignments being assigned for attendance-taking purposes so that we can put a tiered response to attendance back in place again. I hope that addresses your question, Ms. Kidos. Just to add that we'll begin that process just like we do with all of our supports and interventions, with making sure that we have sufficient supports for families so we would not be looking to have some sort of consequence for families if there's a barrier that they need us to address, for example, technology, Wi-Fi, social emotional supports, et cetera, because our, our position is and has always been to make sure that we provide supports before we move to other systems. So Ms. Kidos, I think that I've covered that question. Was there anything else with regard to attendance? And it looks like Ms. Kidos is having some technical difficulties, so I'm going to continue to help facilitate the Q and A. I'm going to pull a couple from the great ideas that she has sent me, and she's thankfully emailing me these things so I can address, because some of them were in the live Q and A, and I don't have that in front of me. So give me just one moment while I shift. One of the questions asks, what would a day in the life of a distance learner look like? We have a need to define that more so once we decide on models. So we have some clear thinking on that. When it comes to elementary, we've developed two different types of tentative schedules based on A, B, or AM PM. To iron that out in a way that's very meaningful, well, we need to have a model chosen. I can say that our teachers and staff have been very thoughtful in making sure that we do more video conferencing or live teaching with our families and students. We know that that is the need. Also being mindful to, to allow for synchronous and asynchronous opportunities for our students and families to give flexibility and to give our students time to spend in a Zoom, for example, with their peers because they miss their friends and classmates. So checking in, Ms. Kidos, I'm not sure if you are sound, is ready back? Okay, the role of Ms. Kidos is now being played by the role of Dr. Cortez temporarily, so thank you for...
Dr. Cortez?
Yes?
I apologize for the interruption. This is...
Please do.
Thank you for putting back up the slide. There have been some questions about whether or not this is available in English, and I think it's because the, the title is only in Spanish and the description of minutes is in Spanish. So for those who are looking at this slide, the rest of the text is in English for the schedule. I don't know if you have this with the title also in English.
So yes, we have this...
There we go. You know what it is? The titles are backwards. The title and the text box, the, the tables are misaligned.
Thank you. That's quite an easy fix that we can make to families, but I'll give our families a moment. I'm sure there's a lot of screenshotting happening at home, so this is one version. This is another version, and we'll send that out very soon. So thank you for your assistance there, or President. Share for a moment. I believe I heard, Ms. Kidos, is that right?
Yes, I am back.
Hi, welcome.
Not sure where you got in the questions, but did we talk about grading?
That's exactly where we're at, as far as what I have that you sent me. So I can say that similarly to attendance, we will have systems in place to, to grade students that are not our COVID-closing grades. All of our grading policies revert to our current board policies at the end of summer school. So, so that's a great question, and I'm glad we were able to answer it directly.
Great. And if you can answer, this is from an anonymous attendee. Will high schoolers be given Chromebooks to use or laptops with the new one-to-one model?
Thank you. All of our high schools, schoolers will be given Chromebooks to use. We are hearing there may be some need for different things when it comes to our career tech education, and that's something that our Chief Innovation Officer and I will work with the team to address and assess needs and see if there's any flexibility when it comes to that, along with, of course, our incredible technology department.
Wonderful. And I know you covered childcare, but this is still being asked. This question is from a concerned parent. Myself and many other parents are wondering what the plan will be for our children during the days and hours they are not in school. Will on-campus childcare, for example YMCA, last posters, et cetera, have the capacity for all-day care and after-school care while keeping children in smaller groups? Will they assist in distance learning? And have there been any, any discussions about financial assistance from the state or federal level for childcare?
Thank you. So I did touch on this briefly. It is not lost on myself, the superintendent, or the board, the need for childcare for our community and for our staff. And so we need first to know our models and our capacity to open spaces to our childcare providers, but rest assured that we've been working alongside them. They're excited to provide services for our students, and we do have some flexibility when it comes to some of our grant-funded programs with regard to fees and where those income levels fall. Stay tuned, more to come. We just need to have our learning models addressed first so that we can give some thoughtful consideration to these logistics. Dr. Rice?
Yeah. Can you address paper and pencil options for parents as it relates to the different programs they choose? We have a lot of questions on the Q and A portion, asking about the availability of paper and pencil options and how that will be dealt with in the different models.
Absolutely. Regardless of the model you choose, there will be some opportunities for paper pencil options. In emergency teaching, we weren't able to provide all of our classroom books and textbooks and workbooks and journals and diaries, but we know now that there are ways for us to do that and to do that safely. And so regardless of the model we choose, we'll make sure to distribute those. And if we're in a hybrid setting, being able to send more updated information in those home regularly will be easier. But if not, we also know that our teachers have come a long way in their ability to do things online and the ability to root, review, for example, a screenshot of a written assignment, and so there will be well more opportunities for paper pencil than we had in the past. If you are a family that needs paper pencil only, homestead is a place that you may consider for a K-8 option.
Great. And not sure if this is for you or Mr. Hess, but this question is from Shannon. I would like to know what steps will be taken for fall sports to help prevent the transmission of the coronavirus. Will athletes wear a mask? Will there be temperature checks? Also, if we recommend persons to wear a mask when indoors, such as grocery shopping, then is it sensible to say the same would apply to indoor sports? I would also like to know if students will be given guidelines regarding physical contact, such as high fives, fist bumps, and other typical contact during games and practices?
So I believe this would be Mr. Hess and perhaps Dr. Rice if needed.
Um, yeah. First of all, that's a very good question, and the answer is, it depends. There are some sports where it just would not be possible to compete effectively wearing a mask, which does not bode well for that sport to start soon. There are other sports where that, that could work, you know, fairly easily. Golf, for example, is one where, you know, you're not usually breathing as hard as you are if you were a cross-country runner. But as for the, the high fives and the fist bumps, that's definitely part of our protocol for training coaches on how to deal with the kids. A lot of that stuff that's always been a part of athletics is going to have, it's going to take some training, but it's going to have to be relearned so that we can do this as safely as possible. And I do think that, that kids who really want to get out there and compete are going to be, they're going to try. They're, they're going to be compliant, and I think they're going to try to go along with these new recommendations.
Thank you. Dr. Rice, did you have anything to add on that answer or any other questions, Dr. Rice? Would you like us to address that? That brings us to the end of our moderated question and answer, unless there's something you would like to pose, Dr. Rice?
I just wanted to give a shout out to Mr. Hess and all the athletic, athletic directors and coaches who have been participating in a collaborative effort to put together detailed plans and protocols for the fall sports for sure, as well as some of the winter sports that are more likely to be approved for, for competition, to get them started with strength training and conditioning. Their efforts were successful in developing some really detailed plans and very well-thought-out plans. We were ready to go, and then we heard from, from the county and the state public health departments that, no, press pause is not allowed yet. So we pressed pause. I, I think you mentioned this, Dave, but if not, the, the CIF has a meeting on the 20th of July to lay out some of the championship calendars, which then we can use to backwards map the competitions. But I just can't say enough about the work that they did. We were ready to go, and we will be ready to go just as soon as we're allowed and it can be safely done. Did you want me to wrap it up as well, Dr. Cortez?
Dr. Rice, yes. Any closing thoughts that you might have?
Yeah. What, what I wanted to say is, I don't know if you saw me on the thing here, but I know I wasn't the only one, because I was watching the, the question and answer, saw a lot of people typing in answers. There's over 200, almost 200 questions that got answered. Some of the questions that I think we weren't able to answer can be, can be done on an online version. There were a couple of requests to post the Q and A and the slides to our website, which I'm sure Ms. Kidos took note of, and I, I look forward to continuing the dialogue and the discussions. One of the repeated questions had to do with, when are we going to roll out a final plan? Our goal on that has been to do so at a special board meeting this Friday, and in the absence of any further guidance, that would, that would continue to be our plan.
Thank you. Dr. Rice, I don't believe that our attendees were able to see all of the answers that our participants and panelists were putting into the Q and A, and so, Ms. Kidos and I will strategize a way to get, make sure that we have that out to all of our viewing public as well. And so we'll just close on the behalf of Superintendent Rice and the Board of Education. We want to thank all of our families for viewing. In addition, we'd like to thank our panelists for being brave and coming along with us alongside us this evening. Of course, thanks so very much to our distance learning committee, their endless, tireless efforts to make sure we look at every consideration as we put models forward, that the hard work behind that is not lost on any of us. So thank you to all, and we'll go ahead and sign off. We will have a Spanish version tomorrow night as well. Queremos decir gracias a todos y que mañana también vamos a presentar en español. Muchísimas gracias y que tengan buena noche. Thank you very much, everybody. Have a great night. Thank you to our ASL interpreters as well. Big shout out.